Please bear with us as we end our closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate of closed meeting seventeen dash eighteen dash six for the closed session?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Kay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. All right. May I have a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
So moved, second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Kay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October ninth, two thousand seventeen, school board and city council work session? Any changes or discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kay, second by Ms. Holmes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Miller Richards.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Miller Richards and Holmes.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I mean, I just thought before we get too far.
Sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Flow up a tad bit so we can keep up with the vote.
Yes.
Or electronic voting.
Okay.
We're still on approval for?
I thought so.
I have to get into it.
Agenda.
Mrs. Ream's on a roll.
Aren't we?
Yep.
It didn't pop up. Did it pop up?
Not for agenda, it didn't.
Are you listening?
Mrs. Ream is logging in.
I'm logging in. I forgot I have to be logged in to vote. Bear with me. Excuse me.
There's your agenda vote. Everybody got it now?
Yep, yep.
Yes.
There we go.
And then we have the?
The approval of the minutes.
How many sets of minutes?
It's just the city. It was the city council?
The city council work session.
It's a motion to approve all? Or just one set? What was the motion?
We did it separately.
And. But the casting of the vote is for both.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's for both?
It is? Yeah.
Separate, please.
Okay. Okay. All right, so now we need? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular school board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Boyd. Any changes or discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we come to our favorite part of the meeting, the recognitions. We'll start with Word of the Month, Thinkers, presented by Walker Grant.
Good evening. I have with me some students of mine, and we are going to present the Word of the Month, Thinkers.
My name is Jason Whitaker.
Hello, my name is Ryland Holland.
Hello, my name is Kyle Snyder.
Hello, my name is Bay Horan.
And I forgot to add, I'm Ms. Gebhardt, and this is Walker Grant Middle School.
Students in Ms. Gebhardt's Innovations and Inventions and Innovations class learn how to code animations, games, and stories. Students use the online website Scratch and Code.org to learn to code, think creatively, reason systematically, and work collaboratively. Essential skills for life in the twenty-first century.
I learned this using Scratch.com, and it took one hundred and two lines of code to do the whole entire thing, including both the cat and the soccer ball. The hardest part about it was making the cat line up exactly with the soccer ball the whole entire time.
Wow.
And if I decided to delete something on the cat's side, then I had to figure out what exactly to delete on the soccer ball's side, so that it would match up again. That was not easy.
All right, so me and Ryland built this robot, and we made it out of Legos from Ms. Gebhardt's classroom. So once we got the robot built, we used the EV3 website to code the robot, to make the robot do what we wanted to do. And we ended up changing around some of our original ideas, but in the end, the robot got built.
So for our animation, ours is a little different from Bay's. We have different backdrops, I think, maybe four or five, and we had to make sure that the characters, we have three characters and one basketball. We had to make sure that we timed it correctly with the changes of the backdrops.
For my code, I used a different program other than Scratch. I used Code.org. It took thirty lines of code, and I programmed it by getting pictures offline and making a little cartoon presentation person say what I wanted him to do.
Using code helps students to think, using important strategies for solving problems, designing projects, and communicating ideas.
Thank you, everyone. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can my Tigers come back up? They want to get a photo of all of you. You want them up here? While they're taking that photo, just to let you know, for that small clip of time, it took a lot of their class time to do the coding, and like she said, to get it right, to make sure the ball lined up with the cat, and the lady came in to talk to the gentleman, so it's pretty exciting. Two hours. Make sure I know there's two hours, Ms. Gebhardt. Make sure you know that when you're grading those assignments.
Well, I'm glad they were reading over the summer, too.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tigers. Great work. Now we have the pleasure of recognizing our James Farmer Scholars. Each year, seventh grade students are selected to participate in the James Farmer Scholars Program at the University of Mary Washington, based on their academic potential recommendations and written essays. The program provides academic enrichment, tutoring, extracurricular activities, and college preparatory classes. They are under the direction of Mrs. Demetri Silver, who is with us this evening, and I'd like to thank her for all of her hard work. Thank you, Mrs. Silver. So it is my pleasure to recognize the following students. It is a large group, so we're going to do it as a one-group photo and hold the applause until the end. We're going to begin with Justin Wade, who is the son of Mr. Montanes Carnegie and Mrs. Cherie Carnegie; Jacob Wigglesworth, son of Mr. Donald Wigglesworth and Mrs. Naomi Watson; Dayana Thomas, daughter of Mr. Philip Harrington and Ms. Artavia Palmer. Okay, we're going to get one. Someone's going to be here next. Angelina Baldwin, daughter of Mr. Josh Baldwin, and Ms. Joy Glass; Angel Anor, daughter of Mr. Kwame Anor and Ms. Cynthia Anor. Maybe they're studying for their Saturday session that's coming up soon. Ariella Ware, a daughter of Mr. Michael Ware and Mrs. Sandra Ware; Calvin Johnson, grandson of Ms. Paula Jackson; Marissa Reed, daughter of Mr. Victor Reed and Mrs. Merlene Janice; Denia Johnson, daughter of Mr. Donald Johnson and Mrs. Devitrius Johnson; Eric Marte, son of Mr. Julio Marte and Mrs. Julisa Marte; Myla Knight, daughter of Mr. Michael Knight; Tyson Taylor, son of Mr. Dean Taylor and Ms. Sierra Taylor; and our last recognition this evening is Cameron Frye, son of Mr. Charlie Frye and Mrs. Keisha Frye. Please help us congratulate these wonderful scholars. Congratulations, Tigers. You may take a seat. Thank you.
So on the behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you all for coming this evening. At this time, we'll take a brief pause for anyone who wishes to leave.
But you're welcome to stay.
You are welcome to stay.
Oh, darn. Before we end at the present, the recognitions, I also wanted to recognize our own Dr. Catlett for receiving the Metzger Award this past weekend, or the weekend before, at the Women's Colloquium event at Mary Washington. So congratulations. Thank you for representing us well.
All right. We'll resume. Next, we have the hearing of citizens. Do we have any citizens wishing to address the board this evening? Okay. We will move on to consent agenda. May I have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of the consent agenda, which includes a head start approvals.
All right, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, seconded by Ms. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We come to action items. Personnel.
Personnel. Recommend the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum of November sixth, two thousand seventeen.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Ms. Kay?
Yes.
At the September meeting, the board discussed whether or not there is interest in continuing to pursue the Board of Distinction designation. The board expressed concerns about objectives eight and eleven, dealing with the requirements to send two members to a number of conferences and serving as presenters at conferences. We decided to ask Mr. Bailey to speak with the V S B A concerning these requirements. In any event, the board noted that many of the objectives would still be completed, and the board should review the list of objectives and designate members to lead the process to complete various objectives. Ms. Miller Richards has drafted a listing of the board members to assume leadership responsibilities for each of the objectives. Mr. Bailey, did you hear back?
I did. Would you like to know what I heard?
Yes, I would.
We would very much like.
The question that you asked me is a question or an issue that can only be taken up by the board. The Board of Distinction criteria are set by the V S B A board, so the staff, the response from the staff is that the objectives remain. The cri- it is what it is. Until the board can decide, can take that up for discussion. I will, if I have another board meeting left, I'm not sure of the schedule. We only meet quarterly, I think, but I will take that issue up with the board, and if I'm not on the board, I will get it to the chair prior to my departure, so that they know that it's an issue. I said to the staff that they're, part of the feedback, the pushback that they gave me was that they wanted to keep the standards high, so that not every, I mean, that's the whole point of having the Designation Board of Distinction, and yes, it is costly, and there are only a few, but again, that's the point. I mean, it's a worthy challenge to undertake. Having said that, I did respond that it's a good thing to review all of your policies, and so that, just like we review our policies, the stand, maybe it's time that we take a look at them. So that'll be my approach with the board, is I'm not arguing that we lower the standards. I'm only arguing that we review the standards to see if they're still appropriate, or if we need to make changes.
And it also just feels a little bit too much, like all the other standards on there are quite high, and all the things for boards should, that board should be doing, but it's just a little bit obvious to require paying for two people to go to every seminar they offer. That makes sure their seminars are full.
Right. Yeah.
It's kind of money grab.
Yeah, I will, I will voice that.
It also, because some of them end up being redundant. I think, you know, if you've already gone to, you know, chairperson, vice-chairperson, training, you don't need to go the next year. You know, so to send two people, it doesn't make sense to do that.
Right.
So that's, that's the other, even if they just look at, you know, if somebody has gone to this particular training in the last year, then you don't have to go. You know, you don't have to send two.
There were ones that are far, that one that you all have very graciously gone to down in Lithville. I mean, we don't need to send two people to that every year. It's the same conference, it's the same material, and it's a long way and requires an overnight stay.
It would be helpful if you all would communicate that to me writing, so I'll know, I'll be able to do better in my argument if I have that in front of you. Yeah, I just need to know.
It's a deal breaker.
Yeah, I just, I just need to know, I need to know the points.
Right.
You know, being a high school administrator, my brain's fried at the end of the day, so I'm just saying.
We'll write them down. The other thing, though, Jarvis, is to find out, like, in, I don't want to, like, belabor this point, but for the delegate assembly, they have changes in the V S B A bylaws, and I don't know that that's a bylaw change, or if that's, because one of the changes for this year was that if you wanted to be regional chair or vice-chair, that you had to, or chair, you had to get your board's approval, and you had to send a letter. But that's new this year, so I'm wondering if that's something that needs to go before the delegate group, and if it's too late for this year.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, I'm talking about the assembly. The assembly votes on those, on those changes, so anyway. But it's something to find out if it's too late for this, or to do something.
We could look at the bylaws and see if it covers Board of Distinction.
Right.
So then, seems like fair game.
Right, there's a whole process, but yeah, we should, we could, we should look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with their assignments?
Thank you so much for, for taking that on, because they are good assignments.
Did you check yours out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Jennifer's a little reluctant, but we just asked her with the whole communications plan.
Too bad you're so good at that. So may I have a motion to approve the listing of board members to lead various objectives for the topics on the matrix recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we need, we need to revisit this document to make sure we're on task. Should we send it out, like, once a quarter?
Sure. Yeah.
And the board packet? Or, I mean?
I would think the board packet should be fine.
Will you do that for us? Maybe start with Janu- send it out in January, and a board packet.
I will say that we already have a delegate and an alternate.
Right, right.
So that's, that's done.
That's one taken care of, right.
For this year, yeah.
But maybe look at it once a quarter, just to remind us that, oh, whoops, we haven't planned a retreat, or then we can put on an agenda, you know, for the next meeting or two or three down the road, that we need to get a report on the communications plan.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. We are now on to disposal of surplus property.
Over the years, we have accumulated quite a bit of, quite a number of items that are no longer being used. The code allows for the school board to declare those items as surplus. Once they're declared as surplus, then we will schedule a public auction to dispose of those items. You'll see all the items listed in your agenda. So I recommend that the board approve the disposal of surplus items listed in the attached document by means of a public auction.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
This is Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion?
So when you say public auction, we're talking full-on auction?
Looks like an auction here.
Yes.
Wow, okay. I think it's good to put these things to good use if people want them, much better than just having them be in a landfill.
And I, before you vote, one other thing to tell you, they'll probably bring another list, we're still compiling, we'll bring another list in December, so for, before we have the auction.
All right, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Additional action? We don't have any additional action items here. Um, informational items. Instructional behavior. Positive behavior interventions and support.
Well, Debbie, did you get all of our votes?
Okay, mine gave me an error.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was still on. I don't have them.
I have a mark in my hand, Ms. Boyd, so I.
Good.
Took the liberty to do that after I heard it.
Okay.
Ready? Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Superintendent, School Board, people, friends, everybody. I was asked to speak on P B I S and what the training we've had been going through. I wanted to tell you what P B I S is first. It's Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. This is the first time I'm doing it here, sorry. This is very fun. It's a framework for creating a positive environment to reduce discipline, and thus hopefully increase academic performance in the school environment. It has three main key attributes to it. Preventive activities is the first one, which in essence encourages kids to act appropriately. The second one is database decision-making, using data to drive and the focus of any intervention. It's not a willy-nilly thing, and you really use data to make those decisions. And the third, the third attribute is problem-solving, using a team that will really brainstorm and look at, look at the data, look at what's happening. Are they blending, and if not, then let's change things and brainstorm about what can happen. As I said, it's a framework, it's in a tiered system of support. If you look at the triangle, the bottom is tier one, that's the core, everyone gets that, and that's what we are trained on this past month or so. All instruction, all behavior interventions, that's all for the entire school. The second tier is for some of the students, they need a little bit more, whether it's academic or behavior, need a little bit more support. And the third tier is the intense kid, just a few kids, they need really a lot more help in either aspect. Our training, we are lucky that we got some names, actually from Pennsylvania, of two trainers who came from P B I S Mid-Atlantic up in Maryland. They came down and helped us with the training. It started with administrators getting a link that they send to their staff, so it'll be anonymous survey, so they can get input from their staff over what was doing, happening well in their school, and what needed some tweaking. So that was very good, and so we got the whole school involved, the whole district involved. Then the building levels, building-level administrators watched a webinar. Now, this webinar talked about what PBS is and what it is not. It introduced some basic language, and it told the administrators what the training would really entail. The next aspect of our training encompassed almost forty people. It included, each building from K to K eight, the principals created a team of principal, the admini- the assistant principal, a counselor, teachers from each grade level, at least one of them being a special ed teacher. It included special area teachers, and either a school psychologist, or a school social worker, some behavioral support. In addition to that, the training also included a lot of central office staff. They were there either to find out what PBS is all about, or to support the different school teams. When we started the, the training, the trainers didn't, started the training, the trainers did an overview of P B I S. Each principal received detailed information about what their survey said, and they could share it with their team, what the, what the pros were in that school, and what were some of the things they really need to work on. The training also, one of the things I liked, they talked about an article, Rethinking Discipline. It talked about social or behavioral issues, and then academic issues, and how we treat them so differently. A math, a child having trouble with math, we would reteach them and work with them and give them encouragement. A discipline? A discipline, with a behavior with having trouble with discipline, we often just give them consequences, rather than teaching them what we really want them to do, and giving them a positive and strokes when they do it right. Another thing that we did during the training, which I thought was very good, is they gave the teams a lot of time to discuss. They discussed their data, they looked at ways to implement P B I S, they looked at ways of training the rest of the people in their buildings. And then everyone got an implementation workbook, they gave them lots of strategies and ideas and some activities to do back in their buildings. The trainers then also reminded us that fidelity, monitoring, and tweaking was very important to really go back to your data and look at it all throughout the year. It's not a one-shot deal, this isn't a, you're done, this is constant to be returned. That's why we made teams in every building. This is one of the things we did in the, in the trainings, on the left or right, depending on how you're looking at, the pink ones. The pink ones were the, this happened to be Lafayette, and they, the team looked at all the things, behavior interventions that were already happening at Lafayette. And then they put them in either tier one, tier two, or tier three. As you can see, there's lots of stuff already happening at Lafayette. And that's just one example, they were all over the division. On the other side, the blue tag is another activity, and this was to discuss behaviors, what behaviors really should be managed in the classroom, and what behaviors should be managed by the office. Both activities were great to be able to bring back into the school, to the faculty, to start some really good and rich discussions about behavior, discipline, and how to treat them. Towards the end of the training, we talked about common expectations. And division-wide, we decided we really needed three. We decided that two would be good for the entire division, so we decided that respectful and responsible were the two expectations that we wanted to work on, expect our students to be respectful and to be responsible. The final one, we decided should be really school-specific, that they would, should look at their data specifically and make their last expectation related to their school. Each school submitted an action plan, ooh, bad formatting, sorry, each submitted an action plan. Humor Center and Lafayette decided as their last, their last expectation was going to be caring, and they're going to be rolling out some of this information about P B I S to the faculty in November. One of the schools will be showing a PBS video that we actually saw during training, talking about some of the language of P B I S, and starting that, that information and training into the schools. The other school will be working with that discipline article, talking about the discipline between the social and behavioral and academic, and why is it different? Another way to get good, good information and thinking into the schools. Walker Grant is a little bit ahead of the pack, because their correlate has already been researching there before we even brought this up. So they already are familiar with that, have done some of the activities. They chose as their expectation, the third one is reflection. They're going to be rolling it out in November as well, both to the scholars and the faculty. And the correlate there is really taking a strong lead in it, and it'll be working more to tweaking and looking back at their data. And then James Monroe decided to use productive, and they're incorporating a lot of the ideas, ideas and strategies from P B I S into their existing structures already. So for the future, what are we doing? There's a lot of staff training that's going, going to be going on throughout the building, they're reviewing data and tweaking what's there and what needs to be changed, they're revising, they're modifying, they're going to be working on strategies for students and for the, the whole school environment, to keep it going and tweaking positive. The trainers are available for consultation to both the principals, the teams, and the school. And I'd love to see bringing some of them back towards the end of the spring, or maybe summer/fall time, to do a little bit more tweaking into the schools and helping them. Any questions on that? Goodbye.
Yeah. So, is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess, you know, it sounds like it's a, you know, it's a really good start, and it's a good program, it's, you know, it's been done other places. One of the questions I had was about the data. Are we collecting data from classroom, from schools and then classrooms, or individual students? So if you're talking out in class, am I collecting data on how many times you're doing it?
At this point, we're really starting with the team, there's one team in each school, and they'll be working to decide what they need. We have overall discipline from, like, Power School. And then we have the data from the surveys to see where we're going to start in the school, as a global school. Each school is looking at their own data and deciding, is that making sense, deciding whether or not they want to go into the classrooms? My guess is they won't start in the classroom, they'll start, like, where, say, they get the most E Rs in the hallway. So what can we do in the hallway to help stop some of those discipline issues? And as they move on, that team will be going more than go into the classrooms and, and train the teachers in the classrooms.
For the, the tier of students that were at the top, that needed a lot of intervention, are we also collecting data on them specifically and their, their behaviors that, you know, so that we know that whatever intervention we're doing is working or is not working?
I believe we should be, yeah. I mean, that would be, that those tiers would be more like your child study kids and that type of thing, and we always take data on them.
Okay. My other question is about, at what point are we involving the parents so that we know, like, for the top-tier kids, you know, what's going on outside of school that might be contributing to the, in-school?
At the top tier, we always do that. I mean, once it gets to child study, that type of thing, we often have social workers involved in the, in the homes, in the homes getting social histories, that type of thing. Is that what you?
I guess I'm wondering, too, is, you know, before they get to the top tier, it might be a good idea to be contacting home, not in a punitive way, but just to find out, like, is something going on, is, is this child sleeping, is this child, do they have enough to eat? Like, those kinds of things, you know, are, are parents divorcing, and we don't know about it, before they get to that top tier?
We do, we are doing, getting some things, if you recall, we're going to look at our new program, S Cubed, that alternative. We weren't quite ready to present to you all yet, but that's one of the things that's happening with her. She's taking a lot of data, and she's working with some of those kids that may be heading up towards that top tier. That's Ms. Shelley, if that was all right to say.
Is there any way we can get a copy of the Rethinking Discipline?
Sure, actually, I have one copy here, I can, I'll make copies and...
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks.
So the next information item is a financial report.
Mr. Baker is not here tonight. The financial report is included in your packet, which is a status report for eleven six, School Board Meeting, and for ten nine.
So, old business, the V S B A Annual Convention will be held on November fifteenth through seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, in Williamsburg. All Board members are registered to attend. And then in recognition of V S B A Take Your Legislature to School Month, we've invited Senator Reeves, Senator Warner, Senator Kane, and Congressman Warner. Following tomorrow's elections, we will...
Governor Whitman?
Um...
Yes, okay.
I suppose, yeah, that would be right. It says Warner, sorry. So following the elections, we'll immediately invite our governor-elect and newly-elected delegates for districts twenty-eight and eighty-eight. And so, we also have a joint meeting...
We have tentatively scheduled a joint meeting with City Council on December fourth, that School Board Meeting beginning at five o'clock, work session.
All right, and new business, we have a, Shannon's going to give us a little bit of information about the delegate, about what's up for delegates.
So, once a year, the Virginia School Board Association has a meeting, and it's at our November Conference in Williamsburg, where they vote on the legislative priorities that the V S B A is going to take to Richmond and D C. And so I just wanted to, we have a delegate and we have an alternate, so I'm the delegate this year, and Barbara is the, Ms. Miller Richards, is the alternate. And I just wanted to kind of go over briefly, I'm not going to do all of them, these are available online, but just to highlight a few of the proposals that we will be voting on, in case people have any strong feelings one way or the other, I want my vote to reflect what we want. One of them, the proposals is oversight of after-school enrichment programs. And so Albemarle County has proposed that instead of after-school enrichment programs being, being under the oversight of the Department of Social Services, that because they're housed at school, and it's school personnel who are doing a lot of the after-school programs, that they be, that the oversight be for school, under the schools. Because they feel like when it's under D S S, that it hinders some of the school divisions' abilities to offer high-quality after-school enrichment programs. I don't know that that necessarily pertains to us, but I thought that was interesting. I don't think so either, but it must them, so. Then, a few of the things are just amending the language to reflect more E S S A than the No Child Left Behind, so I'm not going to go over all that. Then, the other one that I thought was interesting for us, it's, Virginia Beach and Goochland are proposing that for teacher preparation and licensure, that they want to amend it, to allow school divisions to have flexibility to establish alternative licensure criteria and metrics, which allow provisionally licensed teachers to receive their full professional license based on locally-designed, performance-based standards, instead of some of the tests that we make teachers take. So, and like, V S B A, under this as well, is that V S B A supports consistencies in public colleges and universities for students seeking to become licensed teachers, that there's just a lot more, like, that we make sure that it's very consistent, that their programs are consistent. And they cite the teacher shortage and, for the rationale for this, and also that there are achievement gaps between minority and Caucasian students for taking the praxis and some of the other tests that we make teachers take. So they're saying, you know, like, let's look at, like, let local school boards decide what works for them as far as performance-based standards. I thought that was interesting. They want affordability, this is a separate one, Virginia Beach has proposed affordability of dual enrollment. They want school boards and community colleges to collaborate in establishing tuition rates to make them affordable, since we're promoting C T E and more dual enrollment classes. And then, the last one that I'll highlight is about the Virginia, Virginia Alternative Assessment Program for the V A P. Right now, the federal government limits states to one percent of children who can take the V A P. And what they're asking for, V S B A, is, well, it's proposed, that they do away with that one percent cap, because it's arbitrary. You know, you could have a school division who does really well with special education, so you might have a lot of students who need the V A P, and the school division is getting penalized because they're over that one percent for accreditation. So that was the other thing that I thought was interesting, and I did talk to Ms. Friday just to see if she had any input in that, and she also verified that it was a, it was an arbitrary number. So, those are the highlights.
Is there anything you want us to weigh in on, so that you would be voting based on what the Board wants? Is that why we're going on?
Right, that's why we're going over it. So if there are things, these are all online as well, so you can read them in their entirety. I just wanted to give, like, the highlights, so that if anybody felt strongly about anything, that we could, that I would be voting accordingly.
So I guess we should get together with her before she goes into that room, if we have?
Right.
Any strong opinions that we need to discuss together?
Well, and all the delegates will be voting on these, from all the different divisions. So it's not, you know, so they're just proposals right now, but these, and, and just because, even if they pass, it just means that V S B A is going to be pushing for these things, it doesn't mean that they're going to happen.
Right.
It's good to have some focus.
Thank you. All right, good of the order. Do we have any items for the order?
I think we did. I guess we might.
Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that was, that was the one, yes.
Please go out and vote.
Please vote, whether, rain or shine, no matter what, please vote, it matters.
All right, so can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, seconded by Ms. Kay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, the meeting is adjourned at eight seventeen P M.